Good morning, everyone. I will call or order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, May 13th. All, please.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Ishaire Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. If you'd all join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Today, we have Reverend Bruce Beatty from the Church of the Nazarene in Ottawa. Are you on, Reverend?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good morning Franklin County Commissioners. We thank you for your service. And let's just hope the Lord in prayer. And when we look at Psalms 118:24, the word tells us to rejoice because this day the Lord is made. And so let us rejoice in it by showing love and reaching out to others within our community. We are in a difficult time with this pandemic. There's a lot of things that are still happening. People within our county and our community are not back to work, and there's financial difficulties. And so, Lord, you know the situation. We would just ask that as this commission comes together, that you would bring wisdom upon this commission as they make decisions for this county. We thank you for their leadership during this difficult time, the decisions that they've had to make. And so, Lord, be with them, lead them, guide them, direct them, in your holy precious name we pray. Amen.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda is correspondence and organizational business, which would include today, a proclamation to consider May 10th to the 16th as National Police Officer Memorial Day and Police Week. Go ahead. The proclamation's attached on our agenda. I'll go ahead and read it. It says, "Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of Franklin County Sheriff's Office. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, nearly 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Deputy Samuel A. Smith of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office." That was on July 23rd, 2010. "Whereas 307 names and fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 135 officers killed in 2019 and 172 officers killed in previous years. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the sheriff's office, and that members of our sheriff's office recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas members of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office played a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Franklin County citizens. And whereas in 1961, President John F. Kennedy designated May 15th of each year as Peace Officer Memorial Day by proclamation. Therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners formally designate May 10th to the 16th as Police Week in Franklin County and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation on this 13th day of May, 2020." All right. We will need a motion to designate this National Peace Officer Memorial Day and Police Week.
This is Commissioner Dunn. And I would just like to say thank you for our peace officers in those trying times dealing with the virus, plus the everyday work the police and the sheriff's officers do every darn day. So I make a motion to approve this proclamation.
All right. And then I heard Commissioner Howard speak up. Did you?
I'll second it.
All right.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right. Derek, do you have anything else under correspondence and organizational business?
No, sir.
All right. Janet, do we have any public comment today?
None.
All right. That brings us down to our consent agenda, which would include considering approving the minutes from our commission meeting on the 6th of May and consider approving soliciting bids for the construction of the Iowa Terrace Culvert Replacement Project. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dickinson, so moved.
All right.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, second.
All right.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
And our item of business for today is to consider purchasing electronic poll books from Election Source. This item lies with Janet. Go ahead, Janet.
Thank you. So as many of you know, we were in the process of hosting a committee of people from around the county, different backgrounds, some being my election workers, a couple of our commissioners that are on this meeting were at that committee meeting also, and various other people who had interest in elections from around the county. We had hosted two meetings there, and we had done a lot of really good work about discussing what poll locations worked and what poll locations didn't, discussing the possibility of moving some poll locations. Those are still very valid discussions that we were having, but we've had to put those on hold due to the virus and being unable to meet. I've had some continued discussion with the committee, and we still have some work to do. But one question that I really felt was really important was these electronic poll books. This was in our plan all along that I had discussed with you commissioners back at the retreat in January about getting these. So these make the flexibility of elections a lot better. It makes us able to, in case of emergency like this virus, where we may need to close down a location fairly quickly if we're, you know, if we have someone say they don't want us to be at their location or for various different reasons, we can very quickly move people to another location without having to worry about getting them a new book there or anything like that. These are not connected to the Internet. A lot of my committee were really concerned about these, so they are not vulnerable to hacking or anything like that. But they do have a full list of all the voters in the county on each and every one of them. So each location can then help direct people to where they are supposed to be at and find out if people are registered to vote, just some information that they have not had access to at the polling locations in the past. So I'm requesting that we purchase the poll books. This is for 22 electronic poll books at a total cost of $30,140, and this will be enough books for location. Several locations would have multiple books, just like they do now in the paper form, and this will definitely help us get people through the line faster. These poll books, you no longer have to look up people alphabetically in the book. You merely scan their ID, which they're required to provide anyways on Election Day, and it automatically pops up their information and verifies all of their information right away when you scan their ID. And then all the election worker at the table has to do is verify their photograph and make sure that that's them. So I would just like to request that the commissioners support this item and allow us to be funded out of our equipment reserves to purchase these poll books.
Commissioner Dickinson, a couple of questions. Do you, does this provide for all of our current poll locations, or is this assuming that we're going to be shutting them down? And also, can you go then to any location and vote, or do you still need to go to your regular voting location?
So this would be enough for all of our polling locations if we deployed one to each of our locations, although as my committee has met and discussed, there are some locations that we know that we cannot continue with just because they no longer meet ADA requirements or they no longer have the facilities that are necessary as elections change. Also, I don't want to overpurchase poll books, knowing full well that in the coming year we'll have to purchase new election equipment, and we will not be able to fund all of the locations that we have currently. Also, I am aware that some of my locations are not interested in continuing with us due to the virus. I know that there are some locations that I won't be able to open this year because of the virus. And so we're having those conversations with the locations, but many of them we can't get in contact with until after they have been allowed to open up. So we are having those conversations. Oh, one, to your other question, sorry, Ian. Your other question was, will you be able to go to any location? That is a law that the state of Kansas passed, and they are currently writing rules and regulations regarding that. The only problem with that for us is that you have to have dedicated Wi-Fi at each location to be able to vote at any location. And as you know, in some of our rural areas, like for instance Centropolis and Rantoul, we have very limited Internet access, and getting dedicated Wi-Fi just for my poll books for safety and security is difficult right now. So there is some work that needs to be done. I definitely want to move to that. I would love to let our voters vote at any location possible in the county, but right now that's not possible. But with these, it will be possible when the Wi-Fi service becomes available in those areas.
So we can build on this. It just isn't all we need to make that possible.
Absolutely. And most of the other counties that have electronic poll books, these, there's a great network of people who can help us through this transition process. They also are regularly having meetings to expand the capabilities of this product so that when the rules and regulations are put in place for the vote anywhere in your county, then we would be right on top of that and know what those rules and regulations are and how to best implement those in our county.
Commissioner Dickinson, again, sounds like maybe the commissioners need to do some research on how we can bring some high-speed Internet to other areas of our county. And also, so then, this is just for the poll books. We're still going to be looking at additional election equipment itself later on. Do you think still yet this year or maybe not?
Well, I put all that on hold because we had put all the discretionary spending on hold. And while I don't consider my election equipment to be discretionary spending, my committee and I discussed that if I did not open all of the locations this year, that I think the current equipment that we have could go one more year. I just don't feel like I have enough equipment to lay to all of the locations. And as I stated, some of these locations are not going to want to let us open because of concerns with the virus, and some of them no longer meet ADA requirements. So I think that gives us a little room to move. I would love to do it this year if that's at all possible. However, I really want at least my committee and the commissioners to be able to look at the equipment in person and help make decisions about what equipment we want to get. I don't want to choose equipment that I feel like is best for everyone when it doesn't meet the needs of everyone and that it's not what everyone wants. So I want to really be a group master to choose what's best for the community and not just what I decide is best.
This is Derek. Janet and I certainly had that discussion, and I would echo everything she just said. I mean, in the five years I've, six years now I've been here, the clerk's office hasn't asked for a thing. They've largely kept their budget flat, and Lord knows that these poll books and frankly new election equipment are long overdue. And so at first blush, my thought was, this is a, you know, a big election year. Let's just, let's do both. Like, it is an essential purchase, but that's, you know, Janet understandably wants to take her time with the election equipment. That is more of a long-term purchase. And as she said, she would like to have buy-in and input from the other elected officials from her committee. And so, you know, I trust that given everything else they have going on, that the timeline in front of us just isn't feasible to do that this year. And so, you know, I will be prepared to recommend that to the board whenever Janet is ready to move forward with it. But certainly, the poll books, that's a no-brainer. I mean, these are the exact type of things that we build an equipment reserve for. I mean, the clerk's office, I mean, if Janet's office doesn't provide a core service, then such a thing doesn't exist. And so certainly recommend this purchase.
Commissioner Dickinson, again, I just know that the state has put off and put off and put off and put off new equipment for their unemployment, and now when they need it, they are woefully under what they need. And I just don't want to, you know, get to a situation where we put it off too long and then we really needed it. So.
I definitely understand your concerns, and I am making some adjustments. So I have reached out to my election equipment vendor and have asked them if we could potentially rent a high-speed scanner for this election. As many of you know, we're expecting to see a much larger push for advance ballots by mail, and I am going to be sending out a mailer to give everyone that's registered the opportunity to get an advance ballot by mail. So I want to be able to offer that service and be able to process those ballots quickly. And there is a high-speed scanner that works with the equipment that I have. I just don't have it because of the cost of it, but I'm hoping that my vendor will allow me to rent one for this election season so we can process those quickly and make accommodations. Now, if we have substantially less amount of in-person voters because we have a lot more advance, then obviously that alleviates the pressure even more on our current election equipment that we will have at the polling locations. So I think I am making adjustments to try to accommodate the equipment that we have without, like Derek said, rushing and getting new equipment just because we really need it, but alleviating the pressure off the system and holding off, taking our time when we feel financially secure enough to purchase this equipment and get the equipment that this community needs.
All right. Any of the commissioners, are there any more questions for Janet?
No. I did, this is Don Stottlemyre. I did serve on Janet's board, and this is one of the topics that we did discuss, and we all fought the board. Of course, we don't take votes or binding to anything, but I think everybody on the board was agreeable that this is a step we need to make in our elections to, so we just don't have to do everything at the same time.
All right. Thank you, Don, too, for your time serving on that extra committee. Did I hear Roy?
Yeah. Commissioner Dunn here. I just wanted to ask Janet, did they change the rules on how old the election worker could be?
No, they did not. It is still 16, and it has been for quite some time. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about that this year because we're anticipating a lot of our election workers not being willing to work because they're mostly over the age of 60 and obviously have concerns about contracting the virus. So I have regularly been using 16-year-olds. I work with Candy Campbell at the high school and try to get government students to either work a part of a day or work all of a day. I also have some of those younger people work in the evening for me doing counts on write-ins and advance ballots and things like that. So I'm looking for every opportunity to use those younger folks, get them interested in voting, get them interested in the process so that we can have them in future years. And we've seen some success with that. We have a couple that have been with us for years now and continue to have interest in doing that. So no, the law hasn't changed, and we are utilizing as many other young people from 16 to 18 that are interested in helping. We will find a way to put them to work.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else before we look to make a motion? An affirmative motion would be to accept the bid from Election Source to purchase 22 NO Ink electronic poll books in the amount of $30,140. Anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
Commissioner Stottlemyre will make that motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Next on our agenda, staff reports. Let's go first up to be Derek Brown, our county administrator counselor.
Thanks, Colt. I've got several things I want to touch on. First, I do want to say a couple of words about Police Week. You know, I think about this quite a bit. People from time to time will tell me, you know, I can't imagine having your job. I can't imagine having the stresses. And, you know, so we'll hear comments like that. And I will tell you that this job, my job, is a complete walk in the park compared to what our law enforcement personnel do. And you really think about those individuals and the situations that they are in day after day. They don't, you know, think about the interactions they have. They consistently interact with people who are at their worst. They, I can't imagine the things that they see, the stuff that sticks with them, the things that their families go through. I just, I am incredibly grateful to have the individuals that we have in this county. And I understand it's Police Week, but the same can be said for all first responders. I just cannot imagine. And I will be the first to admit, there is absolutely no way, like there is no way that I could do that job, have to work very closely with the sheriff. And there are times when I am tempted to stop him from even telling me about some of the situations that they have to endure because it's all I can do to even hear it. And when you put yourself in those situations, I just, I can't fathom it. And I just want to say that I admire that group of folks and certainly appreciate everything that they do, not only for the organization, but also for the people of this county. Transitioning on, so as you all know, each year we do, we've historically called them cosponsorships with TGT funds. So we'll have vendors reach out to us or events and ask for a certain amount of funds. This year, Casey and Susan put kind of a more formalized process in place, and just as we were about to deploy that, COVID-19 hit. And so we do have applications, but so many of these events aren't going to happen. And Casey has been asking me for several weeks now, what do you want to do about this? And I just want to discuss it briefly with the five of you. How do you want us to handle this? I mean, I am apt to just say that for this year, given how everything is in flux, that I, Casey and I, just be given the discretion to make these determinations on a case-by-case basis, depending on whether this event is going to happen. And that will, of course, depend on what phase of this pandemic we're in and what the will of the specific vendor is. Historically, because it involves TGT funds, I, basically anything that involves TGT funds, I bring to the five of you. This year's a little different, and there's no real easy way to do that. It would be very piecemeal, very inefficient. So I'm inclined to just ask for discretion to make those decisions as they come up. What I would tell you is these are small sums of money that are well, well below my purchasing authority. And you guys give me a $10,000 spending allowance, and I want to say the largest request we got was 2,000, and that was an outlier. Most of them are well under $1,000. And so looking for feedback from any of you there on what you would like to see. Thank you.
Well, this is Commissioner Dunn. I agree with you, Derek. I think if it doesn't happen, we don't need to give the funds out automatically just because we had these events in the past. I think it needs to be discretionary, and if they don't occur, then the funds don't go out.
Commissioner Dickinson, also, I was just going to say that also that we're going to assume that these funds are not going to be as large this year as in the past. So, yeah, to not put them out if they're not having an event, probably prudent this time. And I don't have a problem with you doing a case-by-case basis. Definitely within your authority.
All right. Mr. Stottlemyre, do you have anything?
I agree with the other two. I mean, this is just a, this is just a position nobody wants to be in. I mean, you know, we all want to do what we can, but it's got to happen before we can do it. And I think Derek and Casey will make their judgment, and hopefully next year we'll get a chance to blanket it and go forward. But at this time, I feel confident that they can take care of it.
Commissioner Howard?
Yeah, I agree. One thing Derek will be aware of, where we're at on any state orders and so forth. So I agree if the event doesn't happen, we shouldn't be giving the funds out. And I also think if an event does happen and they're in any violation of a state order or whatever, that the funds may not be given out then, too. So I agree.
This is Colt. That's a good point, too, as far as making sure that they go to appropriate uses. That's, and then Ian made a good point also as far as needing to be adaptive, considering
That's, and then I had made a good point also as far as needing to be adaptive, considering revenue may not be where it where it has been previously. So, all right, Derek, looks like you have a consensus on that. Anything else?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. And to be clear, you know, the couple of huge events we have, I suspect we are going to have several discussions about the car show, for example, for a variety of reasons. So Power of the Past, I mean, there will be some outliers that I will still bring to your attention. But generally, on some of these smaller events, we will just go ahead and exercise our own discretion. So I appreciate that. Next thing I want to talk about is Gala Wilkins. As all of you know, Gala has stepped in for the last several months and filled the interim HR director role for us and just wanted to extend appreciation to her. Tomorrow is her last day. I can't imagine where we would be had she not agreed to come back and step into that role. That position in and of itself is demanding. When you add a pandemic on top of of everything we deal with at the county from an HR standpoint, I just sincerely am not sure where we would have been had Gala not agreed to come back. So definitely appreciate her. She has put, one of the hardest parts of the budget are the personnel numbers because I ask for a number of scenarios, especially in a year like this where we're worried about revenue, what, you know, what do the numbers look like for if we keep our pay plan in place and do a one percent cost of living, for example, and all of these various scenarios. And Gala took the lead on that this year and did an excellent job. She's done an excellent job of setting an example for Sari, who, as you all know, is our new HR director, who has done a fantastic job, by the way. But certainly appreciate Gala and want to recognize her for for her efforts. Paul Bean is currently working on behalf of the county, applying for some of these community development block grant funds. That is quite the process and and there are currently a lot of questions about how to do that. And so the state is setting up Q and A sessions and 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 he, I mean, Paul is following through on that every step of the way, doing good work on our behalf. The the purpose of that, if all of you don't know, is so cities and counties can apply for grant funding, which we would then disseminate to businesses in the cities and counties. The city of Ottawa has done this on behalf of the businesses in Ottawa, but up to this point, we haven't for the businesses in the little cities in the county as well as the rural areas. So very grateful for Paul. Paul was supposed to be on vacation this week and he decided to come back to assist us with that. So definitely grateful that he chose to do so. And then finally, COVID- nineteen. I'll use this as a segue before we turn it over to Alan. We continue to respond to that. Like Alan and Nick are going to give you a more comprehensive update. But it, you know, it continues to be demanding. As I told you, Colt, on a conference call yesterday, you know, it's hard to put an exact number on it, but I'm, Casey and I are still fairly inundated with questions and emails every day about what the order means. Most recently, it's transitioned to questions about Phase Two and when we are going to transition to Phase Two. And as we talked, the team got together on call yesterday, we have no idea what the state's plan is. According to her original plan, Phase Two was slated to begin on the eighteenth, which is this coming Monday. But there are a number of criteria that needed to be met in order to do that. And and that's all at the governor's office's discretion. So I I will tell you, our case numbers are still going up. And so if you were to look just at that, then it it's hard to think that we're going to transition to Phase Two on Monday. But my understanding is that hospitalizations and deaths are below what was projected. And so that might indicate that maybe we will move on to Phase Two. So I wish there was something more that I could offer to the board and to the public about that. But sadly, we just, we've been given no info at this time and and we we just don't, we don't know what the state's going to do. I will tell you that my team, we've got plans in place. We're preparing for any number of contingencies. And we feel like we have a very strong handle on what our particular situation here in Franklin County is, but we can't implement any of these plans until we hear from Governor Kelly's office. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alan. Thank you, Colt.
All right. Alan Redcliff, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, just to add on a little bit with what Derek had to say about COVID, we're watching that very close. And if we have any major changes, of course, our team will get back together and and discuss anything that needs to be taken care of. We're also, the dentist offices are starting to open back up. The other specialty doctors and offices are opening back up. And we are moving some of our personal protective equipment, the masks that we have in surplus. We're pushing them out to the doctors that are in need of that because they can't find anything either as much as we can. Saying that, though, we have had discussions with EMS, the hospital and public health, and have an idea or a number on all of our protective equipment that we need to keep for a surplus, for at least thirty-day surplus in case we do have a surge between now and the end of the year. So we're watching that very close and making sure that we do have enough personal protective equipment for our healthcare and first responders. We have continued to support public health with their testing. The command trailer is setting out at the county annex again. And Nick will go into this a little bit farther, but they're doing a lot of testing again this week. And that trailer just makes it a lot easier for the the workers that are doing the testing. Plus also, I think they can get more testing done through that. I think that's about all that I have right now, other than from now through the rest of the week. We've got severe weather potential tomorrow, and they're saying three to four inches by the time the, of rain by the time the whole system moves through this weekend. So we can expect a wet weekend, it sounds like.
All right. Go down to Nick Robbins.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is Nick. Jump right in. I want to give you the update for the Health Department, what we've been doing and how that looks. Just looked today. We have got results back, six hundred and three-one tests that have been conducted within the county. As of this morning early, we had twenty-nine positives and forty-seven pending tests. So last couple of weeks, we have increased testing, testing has become more available. So we have utilized the trailer for drive-through contact testing. We have done a, we've been pretty busy based in contact. We continue to get positive. We have to trace those down. How we do that is we get a list from the individual and trace them, all those contacts, and we test them. And then if they come back positive, we call that group of their contacts. So as you can guess, we get more positives, we have more people we have to test. And that's why that trailer has been, has been great. I will put a shout out to Ottawa Family Physicians Lab. That staff has done a tremendously good job. They've tested the majority of our people and have been a big group to work with. With that, like, we continue to to stay on top of it, conference calls. Working hard, we've got the shock clinic back open, slowly increasing that. And we opened up family plant last Thursday, so we started seeing patients with that. So it's, it's business starting to get as normal, COVID investigations. Is there any questions on the COVID response that I can answer for the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Dunn. Nick, do you have the capability to go mobile to, especially like a group, a group site to do the group testing? Can you do that?
We're still working on getting group testing where we can do some drive-through and go throughout the community. What, as we continue to find, things change daily. We think that we're getting close to being able to do some kind of randomized testing and and something changes. It's it's all at the state level, waiting for guidance on what to do. So there, as soon as we we get the okay to do it, I believe that with the drive-through testing we've been conducting and having to use the trailer, we'll be able to mobilize that anywhere we want to go. And we've gotten, we've gotten very, very good with the testing. I think the most we've tested today is upwards of sixty-eight or sixty-nine people. So we we can run a lot of people through the drive-through testing once we get that ability.
Well, yeah, my question was, how do you do it if people can't drive through? Can you go to some place, some location and test them remotely?
If somebody that is a contact that we cannot, that cannot get to us, we have been able to go to their residence or go to their location and test them, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Nick? Thank you, Nick. Next up, let's have Rick Geis, under Sheriff.
Good morning. Thank you for the comments, Derek, on the law enforcement group and family here. We do appreciate it. And everybody's doing pretty good over here so far, so, and will continue to.
All right. Any questions for the sheriff's office? Go down to Janet Paddock, county clerk.
Thanks, Chair Waymore. So just one addition that I wanted to make to our discussion regarding elections. And we were notified last week from the Secretary of State's office that we have access to a substantial amount of grant funds. And as I mentioned, I'm going to be sending out a mailer to do advanced ballot by mail for all of our citizens. And that grant is going to pay for that completely. It's also going to allow us to get some PPE at our polling locations that we really need, like some sneeze shields that work with our poll book you guys just approved. So we're going to be really ramping up our efforts to make sure everyone's protected at the polling locations. But at the same time, it's going to pay for those people who don't feel comfortable getting out at at the election sites to be able to get advanced ballots by mail. So we're really thankful for the Secretary of State's office making those funds available for us. And as you know, we have about eighteen thousand registered voters, so we have a lot of different scenarios. People living in populated areas like Ottawa and people living in rural areas, say like Centropolis and Rantoul and Lane. So we do have a lot of different situations that we have to accommodate when it comes to elections. Regarding the budget, we're moving along with the budget. I'm wrapping up the review of all of the department head budgets and just touching base with department head, let them know that I have reviewed their budget. And if I have any questions regarding their budget, just finalizing those things before we get them all into the budget book for the meetings that we anticipate having with you guys. And we will be getting ready to set those up and push information out to you guys regarding the budget.
All right. Any questions for Janet? Thank you. Let's go down. The next up will be David Lee, Public Works Department.
Good morning, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. So last week, we had quite, quite a storm. Related to that, we hauled off around twenty-five loads of debris to the landfill from that storm. And we have dozens of piles stacked around the county that, once it dries out, we will get those burned and and taken care of. We've been working on repairing the washouts that occurred during that storm. One area in particular that we've already, that we've already addressed is the area between Texas and Tennessee on Allen Road. I've heard estimates of about three and a half inches of rain that fell in a very short period of time during that storm, which flooded all the fields and the roads in that area. So we pulled that back together and added rock to to keep those roads open. And so we'll continue to to work on those problems caused by last week's storm, in addition to what we're expecting this week. And also in anticipation of this three to four inches of rain that Alan was mentioning, we have already gone out and in some of the areas that we get flooding, where we have flood flip signs, we've already, you know, put those down, activated those, and we'll be adding lights to those later this afternoon in anticipation of the storm. Some of the work that's that's gone on in addition to taking care of these washed-out areas, I mentioned a few weeks ago that we were going to start on the, replacing a wooden bridge structure on Louisiana Terrace just north of Riley. We were able to get that completed. We also replaced a crossroad tube, upsized it right there at the intersection of Louisiana and Riley Road. That work is almost complete. We've got just a little bit of ditch work and and then some cleanup work to to finish that up. But already, with the storm that rolled through, we had zero issues with with that location. So going forward, we feel like these improvements are really going to make that area a lot safer to live, particularly since it's a dead-end road. And that's the only way out is is across those structures. So we feel like that's a, that's going to be a good thing for that area. The Iowa Terrace Culver Project, you just approved in the consent agenda, the approval to solicit bids. We will, we have an anticipated bid date on June fourth. We'll do that at the clerk's office if we're able to. So typically, it takes about thirty days once we award the bid. Takes about thirty days to get the contract in place and get the materials ordered. So I expect this project to begin in early July and last a few months. Also, the last time I mentioned that, that project, we were looking at using outside inspectors to handle that. After kind of reviewing things with the engineer and with the staff, we have elected to handle that in-house. This particular project is something similar to projects that we have completed ourselves in the past, and our personnel in the past. And um, uh, our personnel, uh, with myself included, will be able to handle the inspection on it. There's not a lot of material testing and those sorts of things that needs to occur. It's pretty straightforward and won't be, um, we will not have to have somebody there um, full time. So we'll be able to handle that between myself and uh, the superintendent and the foreman. So uh, that should save us roughly $30,000 in inspection fees. Um, so that, that project should be kicking off here this summer. Uh, I mentioned a while back, a pavement management plan that uh, Norm Bowers with KEC is helping us with. That is underway. In fact, uh, Norm has uh, already been over the uh, western portion of the county. And we'll be back later this week, weather permitting, of course, uh, to complete the east half. So um, here in the next month or so, we should have a, have the uh, uh, pavement value, pavement management plan put together. And I'll be able to present our findings on that uh, sometime in the next few months. And so that's, that's all I have for today. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is Cole. Uh, you said you hauled off a lot of debris. What uh, I said like limbs or structures?
It, no, it was uh, large trees, uh, things that, that we didn't feel like we could leave in place that needed to be uh, removed immediately in order to open up roads and those sorts of things. Um, the, and so we loaded that into our, our big end dumps and took that to the um, oh, the, oh, the tree and limb debris area at the landfill and deposited it there. Uh, the, the piles that I mentioned that need to be burned, those are uh, mostly small limbs and trees, smaller trees and that sort of thing that, that can be uh, easily burned on site. And of course, we'll uh, we'll call in the, the burn permits uh, whenever it's appropriate to do the, that work.
All right. Sound like there's any questions. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Next up will be Commissioner's comments and board reports. Uh, Commissioner Howard, you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, I have not been to uh, any meetings, of course. Um, mine have not been taking place. So I have not been to any, um, don't really have anything else. Just want to again, thank everybody for all they're doing. And uh, the proclamation uh, is kind of, comes to the time when uh, we see what can happen with the funeral that's going on uh, today in Kansas City. So it seems like a appropriate time for that proclamation to be done. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, I want to iterate with the Administrator Brown said about uh, Gala stepping in and short notice and helping us out there for a couple of months. I really thank uh, Gala for doing that. Also have another question for Derek. Uh, I know the Senate is working on the uh, taxation bill um, to do something besides the tax lift. I just wonder if Derek has any more information about that.
Um, to clarify, Roy, are you talking about Senator Tyson's proposal?
Yes, yes.
Um, I have not heard, uh, since this pandemic started, I have not heard anything about that. Um, Janet, do you, have you heard anything?
Yes, I have. I believe the House is supposed to be carrying this in the Tax Committee today and working the bill to try to move it out to the floor so they have it ready for tiny die, which is the only day that they're um, planning to work. So um, they're supposed to be having the hearing live today that you can listen to. So I will try to get on there and listen to them work that bill and see where that's at. Um, it did pass out of the Senate before all of this happened, um, but it had not been worked in the House. So um, I am watching that and have been getting some correspondence on that. So I'll keep you guys informed if I hear any more.
Yeah, I just, uh, as Commissioner Dunn, I just know that uh, Kansas Association of Counties is uh, very much against that bill, what it's, what it's done now. So anyway, I'll be interested how that turns out. I haven't been anywhere. Okay. I haven't been anywhere else and uh, and uh, just have the same sentiments about our Sheriff's Department and first responders. Uh, they got a tremendous job to do and appreciate what they're doing. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Dickinson?
Um, I have several things. I attended a Zoom meeting of the uh, Ottawa Chamber of Commerce yesterday. Um, of course, there's a lot of cancellations as far as events moving forward, but also there um, is money available in the form of loans and or grants available for these small businesses that have been um, had losses through the COVID-19 situation. And they wanted to make sure to, that that was out there. Um, the 4th of July, they are still trying, going to try to still move ahead with a fireworks show, although all the other events have been canceled. Um, it's kind of interesting to hear the community partners' reports as far as in it all, of course, um, COVID-19 is in the forefront of all of those. Um, the um, schools may never look the same as we go back, you know, as far as large groups of students getting together, uh, at least not for the next coming years. Um, I did listen to the City of Ottawa regular meeting last Wednesday and the study session on Monday. And um, the ORC has made the decision that they are not going to open the uh, pool for the season. Also, the City of Ottawa is um, looking at budget reductions as we move forward throughout this year, again, because of uh, COVID-19. Um, the state of Kansas, uh, just unemployment, there had been some questions as far as if your business opens and you do not feel safe to go back or because of underlying health conditions or caring for somebody that has COVID or caring for children, um, that they will consider on a state, on a case by case level, whether uh, you could still get unemployment benefits. Um, a couple of openings that I've just recently heard of, the driver's license office opened as of yesterday, I believe, um, but it is by appointment only. So if there's something that you need to take care of as far as that's concerned, then that is unavailable. And the library, the Ottawa Library opens tomorrow, I believe, for limited uh, reference services, uh, copying and those kind of things. And also for pickup of items put on hold, items that they have available uh, at, at their library. And also the Williamsburg and Richmond libraries are opening for limited services. And I went by the courthouse a couple of times. Uh, the painting is definitely taking shape and it is awesome. Uh, it does look wonderful and uh, really spruces up that facility. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah, uh, all of you will be getting some updates and uh, on the upcoming annual meeting of the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority. It will be done by Zoom. And I know Shay, I got all my information from her yesterday. That's our new director. And uh, uh, she will be putting out all the information to any of the commissioners in our six counties that want to join in on that meeting. And there'll be a lot of things discussed, our upcoming uh, budget for the next year, our uh, uh, appointing the new management committee board, uh, doing a, go over our audit, go over annual dues to the, to the counties, go over our expenses and projects, go over our night, our 2021 budget proposal. And uh, the coordinated report will have to do with uh, updates on our website. We're uh, I helped RCND get in with Amazon Smile donations. And we're working on it with the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority now and redoing our QuickBooks. And uh, a lot of board speculations. So if you, and you have a chance to, when you get that and a chance to listen in, uh, you'll be able to update you on uh, here Shay anyhow, not me either. But eventually she'll, when things get straightened out, she'll be around on the visit with all of us. Uh, that's all I have at this time.
All right. Um, I haven't attended any outside meetings, of course. Um, one thing I do every week, uh, is participate or listen to the uh, emergency operations briefing uh, on Mondays. And of course, that's our team here at the county and then other agencies that are all working together. And um, I guess uh, my opinion, my takeaway would be that they're very capable and doing, we have a good team. Um, a lot of people are working very hard. A lot of people are uh, doing things they don't normally do to make it work. But that's because they care. And uh, like I said, they're very capable. So um, have positive things to bring back from that, from that experience. But uh, other than that, nothing, nothing to add. So would anyone else have anything, staff or commissioners, to add before we look to Jordan?
Uh, Mr. Waymore, I forgot something.
Go for it.
Yeah, I was up, I didn't go in. I drove around it and threw it and everything. But the new truck stop in Weldville is open now. Uh, very nice setup, very nice buildings. Uh, I'm not sure the truck porch is open. They had all the doors closed. But I know that the pumps and the, and the truck stop part is all open. A lot of trucks in there. And it looks like they're putting the finishing touches on the, on the truck driving school. I'm not sure it's open yet either, but it looks really nice. So maybe I get a chance to go by there. Uh, I don't know who got the contractor to do the concrete up there. But they sold a lot of concrete. That's all I got today. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
I drove by there also. Go ahead, Commissioner Dickinson.
No, 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 go ahead. You were going by that. You were.
Yeah, on that, uh, I noticed that the road isn't paved yet, uh, that we, we donated some money to. Maybe David could look into.
Uh, I can give you a little on that if you'd like.
Go for it.
They're, they're discussing that in their meeting tonight to go forward.
Okay. All right. Good deal.
I read that on their minutes and agenda, but I'm not able to go to the meeting. But if I hear anything, I'll make sure everybody knows. But I was up there and I noticed that too. And I know that's on their agenda tonight to go forward with it, on their agenda tonight.
All right. Good deal. I'm sure they didn't forget it. But uh, all right. Commissioner Dickinson, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, Commissioner Dickinson, I just wanted to go back to uh, Gala. And I, we did appreciate her stepping in. And I also have been in contact with Sari because I feel like, you know, we, we hired her and then we all kind of abandoned her. Um, but um, you know, the fact that, that, that office has been continuing forward and doing a good job and, and handling everything that we've asked them to, um, that's amazing as she stepped in. So uh, again, I appreciate our new uh, HR director also, um, and the job that she's doing. That's it.
All right. And look for a motion to adjourn.
Stottlemyre, motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, Don. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
All right. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.